Good evening, welcome everybody to the March 10, 2021 Provo City Planning Commission Meeting. I have a quick question for staff at the onset. Probably answered if I read far enough, but relative to the items that are on the agenda tonight, item number three, that's noted as continued. Does that mean that that is to be heard tonight because it was continued earlier? Or?
Right, yeah, we just won't introduce that one tonight.
Will not introduce it tonight? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. So we just have two items on the agenda tonight. The first item requires legislative action on the part of the city council. So the commission will just be making a recommendation on that. And with that, I am going to start by reading a statement relative to public meetings and COVID-19. In accordance with Utah's Open and Public Meetings Act, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission with an anchor location such as the council chambers presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present there. These are the facts upon which I have made this determination. The World Health Organization has classified Novell coronavirus disease as a pandemic. The U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention state that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close contact with one another. State Public Health Order 2021-5 addresses the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency and establishes minimum standards to address the unique circumstances in different locations. Utah County is currently listed as having a high level of coronavirus transmission as determined by the state's transmission index metrics. Physical distancing measures will be difficult to set up and maintain in the council chambers and other meeting rooms. Therefore, for the next 30 days, all meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission will be conducted entirely via electronic means. Meetings are broadcast live and available later on demand at youtube.com/user/provochannel17 and at facebook.com/provochannel17. Agendas and support materials are available at provo.org/PlanningCommission. To make a public comment or join a meeting via telephone, follow the instructions provided on public notices of each meeting. To send comments to the Provo City Planning Commission members or weigh in on current issues, email them at dspublichearings@provo.org. And with that, we will go ahead and take a roll of the commissioners. And we will start with Deborah Jensen.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Russell Phillips, no conflict.
And thank you, Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Commissioner Urquaga.
Laurie Urquaga, no conflicts.
Commissioner Henry.
Ryan Henry, no conflicts.
Commissioner Knutson.
Robert Knutson, no conflicts.
Thank you, and I am Dave Anderson, no conflicts. I believe that only Commissioner Jones will not be with us tonight. And with that, item number one. The Development Services Department, on behalf of the Sign Committee, requests an ordinance text amendment to Chapter 6.06 and 14.38 of the Provo City Code to update the use, excuse me, update use of electronic signs and standards for signs in outdoor advertising. Mr. Ardmore.
Thank you. So I've got all the wording here on the screen if I need to route to any of it. But just kind of the background on this one is the city council has a sign committee with two counselors, Counselor Sewell and Counselor, two counselors. And then staff, myself and Jevon Weaver from the Community and Neighborhood Services Department have been serving, as well as Gary McGinn, have been attending those meetings with them. As they have had a goal to try to go through the science standards specifically with the electronic display signs in the city and kind of rework that, make it a little bit more business friendly and kind of update some of the standards that were in there. So they've gone through that in the past year. They've been back to the full council and a couple of study sessions to update them with their proposals and to get feedback. And they feel that they are now ready to move these proposals forward to change the code. The main changes provided in this proposal are changes to Title VI, updating the regulations for hold times based on location and underlying zone, and then changes to Title XIV to update some of the terminology and definitions for hold times, adding residential zones that are banning electronic signs, making sure all the residential zones are part of that, the emission of an electronic display sign, adjusting some of the corridors that would allow them, taking away a little bit that they had before by adding some as well. And then the last of those changes is updating, replacing some of these charts that we've had in the code for years and years that are hard to read and hard to manage, removing those and updating them with just standard tables for size sizing of signs. So staff has brought this forward to the planning commission as it goes back to the city council and is recommending approval.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Ardmore? We'll start with Commissioner Urquaga.
Got to turn off the mute. Aaron, do you have any sort of a map that shows where the zones that do permit signs are allowed? I know you've got the description in the staff report, but I kind of like seeing a map sometimes.
Yes, I understand that. I know one has been prepared and been used in the city council study sessions from the other department. I just don't have it in my slides tonight. I apologize.
All right. I didn't see anything, I didn't understand on the, in the discussion, but a visual help would have been appreciated. But it is what it is, so let's move forward.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jensen.
I assume you mean me.
Lisa, yes, thank you.
Mr. Ardmore, on page four, it says something about existing signage back to a certain date. So this goes into effect for existing signs?
Right, and that's language that's already in that section. That is not proposed to change. The May 28th, is that what you're referring to? I think you're muted.
If we approve changes, do they go into effect retroactively?
I don't believe they do, no.
The question I had was on page 17 of the staff report. It talks about maximum sizes. Let me find it. I just was wondering if we should have a maximum height? Because if you take out the graphic, there's no maximum height there anymore and the chart doesn't, nothing verbally expresses one that I can see.
So that the maximum height is still controlled in the language further up in 1438 based on the zone that it's in. So we still have those height regulations. It's not just, it's not shown in the graphic one.
Commissioner Henry.
I just had one question to clarify. On page three, when it talks about hold times and transitions, Section 2A, eight seconds for a sign adjacent to and facing Interstate 15. Does that include the billboards that line Interstate 15?
No, so these are just on-premise signs. So it's, we're not talking about billboards at all on these.
Okay, does, do the billboards, are they involved at all with Provo City Code? Or is that some other?
They're not addressed in these proposals. There's a separate section that addresses those.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Any other questions of staff? If not, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Staff can help us with that.
No, I have the comments at this time. Oh, okay. Caller 250, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead. Please state your name.
Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Jeff Young. I represent Young Electric Sign Company in Salt Lake City. And we've got lots of customers in Provo and the surrounding cities. We celebrated our 100th year this past year and we're very grateful for the support that the planning commission and the city council gives the local businesses and gives our company to help provide support for the business, the business group. We're very supportive of the elimination standards set forth in the code, the foot candle approach, and we really support policies and ordinances that support the local business community. We don't necessarily agree with the assertions of safety that are listed in the code. And we reference the 2013 federal highway study concluding that the longest visual fixation on a sign was 1.3 seconds, not much longer, as was cited in a couple of foreign studies. And so what I'm basically saying is, we don't think these signs are unsafe. And so we're, you know, preferring to have much more flexibility. I went through 10 years of traffic study data from the state of Utah wherein they studied and researched and published over 509,000 crashes. So this is over 500,000 crashes. And of course, we all know what causes crashes. Speeding, drunk driving, all these things. Signs are not mentioned once in 10 years of exhaustive study. And there's a lot of people that investigate those accidents. I want to mention that. Another study that we refer to often is, was done by the Tantala Group. They published five major studies from '07 to 2010. And it was interesting because they watched traffic accidents before digital displays were deployed. And then after, they studied 160,000 accidents in those corridors and about a billion annual vehicles per year and found, quote, "no statistical relationship between vehicular accidents and digital signs." So what I'm coming to here is we don't agree that long hold times serve the interests of the electronic sign users. Therefore, we're very grateful that these codes are loosening up. In fact, we favor animation and motion, which happens in a lot of other communities in Utah. Not every community, but Salt Lake City, South Salt Lake, they're letting animation and motion happen. We do not agree to flashing and scintillation, which is a big part of a lot of those codes. And these signs are very effective and very efficient and very cost-effective for these businesses to advertise. And in the wake of COVID, there couldn't be a better thing that we could do to try to support our business community than give them an opportunity to advertise in this very efficient and economical way. So we support the flexibility and appreciate your time in hearing me today. And thank you again for all the work on the sign code. Thank you.
Aaron, I appreciate that map. Commissioners, do we have any questions about that? Commissioner Urquaga.
Yes, I'm having a little bit of difficulty reading the legend. But so, let's see. What does it mean to say multi-tenant hold areas?
So those are the areas that are referenced. And let me get to that.
Is that like a shopping center with more than one?
Yeah, it's where they have 20 tenants is what the council was looking at. I'm just trying to find that. So it'd be a shorter hold time for those areas of 20 tenants in the SC3 zone.
Okay. And then long hold areas, okay. And significant amount of that goes in parallel. It's the switch to the long hold areas that is the biggest change? Is that the two or three red zones?
That, in addition to the change in hold times, are kind of the biggest changes here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff before we go back to public comment? Okay, great. Staff, do we have anybody else that's waiting to comment?
Yes. Caller 011, go ahead.
This is Paul Evans. I'm resident of Provo. And I sent in a kind of a list of questions and comments and concerns. And I don't need to restate those. I think you have those in front of you. There is one other issue that really needs to be clarified, particularly for the North Canyon, North University Avenue design corridor. And that is which of the signs are considered to be legal, non-conforming, or grandfathered? And so that we have some idea of exactly which signs will remain operating as is and which ones will be then under the, under this new change in ordinances. So there's five issues then. Which signs are legal, non-conforming, grandfathered? And then the other four that I submitted earlier.
Mr. Evans, thank you. I think before we go on, staff, do you want to help clarify things?
So any sign that has been approved, built, and issued a certificate of completion before these amendments are adopted would be grandfathered in. So any signs that have not reached that would not.
Okay, thank you. Back to staff, is there anyone else that would like to comment on this from the public?
Caller 756. Press star six to unmute.
Got it. Hi, James Carpenter here. Appreciate the opportunity to testify. I'm speaking on behalf of the Utah Sign Association and Chair Anderson and the Provo Planning Commission. Once again, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about the proposed code. What the focus that I'm going to talk about is regarding the proposed hold times for electronic signs. We, as Jeff had, Jeff Young had just indicated, we are in agreement with certainly some portions of the code, particularly the brightness limitations, I think are great and that we see that that tends to be one of the biggest areas of concern. Because if the sign is too bright, it doesn't matter how it operates. It's always a problem. And we strongly believe and recommend that the science, electronic signs for our local business community be no more restrictive than the regulations that you have for outdoor advertising. The proposed ordinance provides what we believe to be favorable treatment for outdoor advertising or billboards. So therefore, we recommend that the city maintain that existing eight-second hold time for on-premise signs since really this is not the right time or place to be more restrictive for hold times on the business community. In fact, we think it's a time to allow for more flexibility, given the, the public really needs to see changes in services, et cetera. And I think that that would provide for that. And I just wanted to comment that, I know Jeff talked a little bit about some studies. There was a study that we saw that wasn't cited, a Texas A&amp;M study. I think I, I don't think. I know I included it with information that I sent your way. It talks about on-premise and digital signs, the only one that we're aware of that deals with digital or electronic message centers and on-premise signs. The result of that study, I'm just going to cite a statement from there. The result of that study provides scientifically-based data that indicates the installation of digital on-premise signs does not lead to statistically, I can say it, significant increase in crashes on major roads. And I think it really does ties in with the information that Jeff talked about, that he just, he personally took a look at 500,000 accidents and found no, not one of these accidents we tied into signs. And I think that's really important. The other thing too, Jeff did talk about the 2013 Federal Highway Administration study that I didn't see that was cited, that talks about the hold time or the fixation is less than the widely accepted threshold of two seconds. It's, that study is around 1.3 seconds as far as glances towards, and this is billboard, digital billboards. And I did include a copy of that, or at least a summary of that for your information. So I think some of the information presented that's from Europe in particular is not always applicable. Okay, well, thank you for consideration, recommendations. I guess I'm done. Thank you very much. Let me know if you have any questions. Happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Once again, staff, is there anyone that's waiting to comment? Well, maybe we're waiting. I'll acknowledge that we did receive correspondence from Mr. Carpenter relative to the things that he was commenting on. So I think most of us probably have had a chance to review that.
There are no additional public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing then and turn the discussion back to the commission. Commissioner Urquaga.
Yeah, going back, I just want to make sure that I understand really well. The billboards that are not part of this ordinance are not inside the city, are they? They're the kinds of things that are along the freeway. But do we have billboards within the city limits that are not on?
Yeah, so there are a number within city limits that are not along I-15 corridor. Those are all kind of grandfathered in. No new ones can be created, built within the city limits, other than the No new ones can be created, built within the city limits, other than the ones that are existing. The I-15 corridor, you can see that most of those have turned to electronic display. But those are regulated and are under a different code.
Okay. And I'm just trying to keep it straight in my mind. We're talking about short term as being anything less than an hour of a hold time and then long term being more than an hour. There's a big difference between eight seconds and an hour. And I'm wondering how the sign committee came to their decision as to what was the most appropriate? Is there any report on that or can you give us any understanding?
We have a jab in here from Development Services. He was really working hand in hand with Hannah Salzow and the two counselors on that committee. Maybe he can shed some light on that?
Sure, happy to speak on that. I am listening to be relating what Hannah Salzow worked on with this. But this was from research that she had done on safety in regards to driving along corridors and having various images. And with so many, the potentiality of having so many signs along a corridor and then changing at a higher frequency of eight seconds. Based on the research that she found, it was determined that 15 seconds is more appropriate than eight seconds for the short hold.
And that is four times a minute at least. So it seems like it's, that does make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to commend staff and the sign committee and council for bringing this forward. I think it's a very ripe time. We've had some discussions about signage in the past, especially electronic signage. And I'm happy to see that we're trying to tighten those regulations up and make that more effective. I do appreciate some of the emails that were forwarded to us from Neighborhood and also from Mr. Sewell. I think it's appropriate that he mentioned in his, in his last email this evening that they're going to take up the issue of nighttime brightness at the next council sign committee meeting. Because I know, and all of you as well, if you're driving down, let's just say, North University Avenue, for example, there are some pretty bright billboard signs, electronic signs along that corridor that are immediately across the street from residential properties. And some of those residential properties, even though there's a wall along University Avenue that separates that, the homes from, from the corridor itself. Many of those homes are two-story, bedrooms upstairs, and they're looking out on that. And that's, that's pretty high level of light pollution, which in terms of public health is not a good thing. So I would definitely be in favor of perhaps limiting the hours those signs can operate when they are abutting residential zones.
Deborah, I could answer a little more on that as well. We have had a few complaints come in regarding a few signs along North University Avenue. I went out and did some tests early in the morning at 4:30 to verify their brightness compared to our code. And in fact, some of these signs are not compliant with our current city code. And so zoning enforcement is aware of this and action will be taken to decrease the brightness for the current signs.
Super.
To at least be code compliant.
Right. Are they considering limiting the hours of operation for those so that, for example, cut off at midnight or 1:00 a.m. or something of that nature?
So that could be part of the consideration that we could talk in sign committee. I know that's going to be part of in the upcoming meetings that we have.
Great, thank you.
You know, if I can maybe follow up on that really quickly, just in terms of what staff found when investigating the level of brightness of those signs. Can you help me understand just maybe the scale of the out-of-compliance part of it?
We, our city code says that it has to be, no, more than three tenths foot candles from a certain distance. The distance is going to be based on the square footage of the sign. So I go out, measure from that said distance with the measurement tool to see how bright that is based on the foot candles. Both of these signs exceeded the foot candles. And one of them, some other things as well, but that will be fixed. So that's how, that's how it measures. I'm not aware that we find that many signs are not compliant.
And I was kind of curious, I mean, I'm just trying to get a feel for it. If they were compliant, how much lower would the light level be? Are we talking, would it be a slight reduction? Is it, is it pretty significant? Do you have any way to, you might not be able to quantify that or, you know, to throw out a reasonable guess even, but?
Sure, both of these, it should be a point, like I said, three tenths. And both of these signs were exceeding, they were like one and, one and three tenths or something. So substantially, this should be.
Wow. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Henry.
Yeah, so as I was thinking about this and reading through all this, I was trying to figure out what don't I like about electronic signs? And it really came down to brightness. To me, the churn time, other than I hate short churn times when you see something in the distance and you're like, what's that? And you start moving closer and then it changes and you can't read it. And, you know, that's just kind of frustrating, but that's, I couldn't see a reason to make a law concerning churn times for that. But really, brightness was the biggest issue. Comparing to just an internally illuminated fixed sign, is there a difference in the brightness of those compared to electronic churning signs?
I, I don't have information on that.
Okay. Because it seems like it is those, those bright LED constantly changing signs that seem to have a brightness problem. But I feel like that's really the only issue. To me, the churn time, along with Commissioner Urquiaaga's comments, I don't know that I'm really bothered by the churn time as much as the brightness. To me, the brightness seems to be the biggest issue that needs to be regulated and controlled. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Oh, no, I was just, had the same question as you. Would code compliance eliminate the residential complaint of brightness?
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? I'll maybe buy people some time before we act on this. This is a really sensitive issue for me for a few different reasons. And although I think my concerns are really probably more tied to a particular type of sign, off-premise advertising. But I think it's very unfortunate that the ability for a community like Provo to regulate some of the different things that we're talking about even tonight seems to consistently be under attack with legislation that's proposed at the state level. And I think several of the things that have been the topic of discussion tonight will probably continually be discussed among legislators. The influence that different professional organizations have in terms of currying favor and at least getting bills put forth is absolutely nothing short of amazing to me. So it'd be my plea that, you know, staff continue to do what they're doing now. I agree with Commissioner Jensen. I think this is a great step. I think it's appropriate. But also, if this is an issue that we care about and we have opportunities to talk to representatives, legislators, senators, whoever it might be, that ultimately is where I'm afraid decisions on these things could be made. So a little bit maybe of a soapbox there. But again, issues that for me are really sensitive in terms of just a community's ability to govern itself. And I'll end with that. Lisa Jensen?
I don't know if this is enough reason to continue an item instead of recommending it for approval. But I really, the only, I have two problems with this. The first is what Ms. Urquiaaga said about the difference between eight or 15 seconds and then a minute is, is it a minute, an hour? Like those were the, that was the lags between short and long. That's huge. I feel like there should be something in the middle, but I don't know how you regulate that without it becoming very complicated. And then the other thing is, I feel like these signs that are adjacent to residential neighborhoods, can there just simply be a shut-off time? Do they need to advertise all night long? If we're not going to require them to dim, can they just turn off? So I feel like I'm not comfortable recommending this for approval unless we can differentiate between these zones that are out in the middle nowhere as far as somebody's bedroom window. And the, and the residences that will definitely, even if they're not as bright, they will definitely see them cycling if they are able to change. And those little things you can, you can notice in the dark. So I feel like that's a negative impact, the same way that my neighbors making noise at 1:00 in the morning is a negative impact. And I, I think that we sometimes just look at maybe those two signs that were mentioned before on North University Avenue. But we, that huge one up by the Riverwoods, there's apartments and condos all around it and they probably can see it as well. So it's not just one isolated area that this is a problem. I would imagine that this homes across from the mall on the west side of the freeway could also see any signs cycling that's going on there. So I'm not anti-signage and I, but I do think that there's no reason for it to be tacky and there's no reason for it to make someone else's life miserable. So those were my thoughts on maybe, as we move towards emotion, how comfortable I feel with where this is at.
Okay. Relative to what Commissioner Jensen just mentioned, could staff maybe elaborate on that? That, just the difference between the churn times that we're talking about there? The specific motivation, and you might have mentioned it earlier, but I'd love to understand that a little bit better.
Okay. I can, I can do it.
Just go ahead.
Sure, happy to. So the, anything in the red is going to be long, recommended to be long hold. That will be changing once per hour. Anything in the yellow would be recommending to change once per every 15 minutes. Any? Second, no. More, more than ten minutes, once per 15 seconds. Thank you. And so multi-tenant, once per 15 seconds. Short hold is once per 15 minutes. I apologize.
And maybe not to interrupt, but when I hear the long hold time of no less than an hour, I equate that essentially to like static display. The, you know, as if that's kind of the goal is to really make a sign function more like a traditional, what would I say? Type of sign, you know, something that doesn't have the capacity to, to be changed and that sort of a thing, which frankly I see value in, in different parts of the community. Is that, is that kind of the intent behind the long hold?
Yes, that is the intent. Getting back to the short hold, it depends. So there's three different categories for the short hold, right? So the first was a long Interstate 15 of eight second. The second is a SC3 zone with 20 or more tenants is a 15-second hold. All others not described as one of those, it would be a one-minute hold. Just to clarify on that. Sorry about the delay on answering that question.
So the eight second would primarily be for the sign located down here adjacent I-15. That'd be the only sign that would, that would be, that would be for, for eight seconds. And that's, that's staying congruent with billboard signage as well.
Okay. The other points that Commissioner Jensen raised in terms of perhaps continuing this to maybe do a little bit deeper dive on, on issues, what are staff's thoughts about that?
I think those are going to, correct me if I'm wrong if your issues are brightness and timing for that. I think that will be addressed in the upcoming sign committee meeting. I know that's one of the items that's on the agenda.
How often do they meet, the sign committee?
Twice a month.
Really? Wow. Okay. Thank you. I think I missed Commissioner Deborah Jensen. Would you like to comment?
Um, no, I think it's been, it's been covered, everything I was going to mention. Thanks.
Okay, sorry about that. Commissioner Urquiaaga.
Hey, coming back to the geography just a little bit, are there any areas of the city where there are off-premises signs adjacent to on-premises signs? So being that a sign on premises would have a nearby sign that is just one of the sort of billboard types.
Sure. I think 1230 North is a good example of that. There's two billboards, or at least one billboard on 1230 North. And then you've got a large display of other businesses with on-site advertising. Then University Parkway is another one. There's billboards on that street and there's also on-premise signage on that street. So yeah, they, they can be side by side often.
Okay, is there a reason for making the, the hold times on those different?
So those aren't, those billboards aren't electronic and they cannot convert to electronic. So those are ready to stay static.
Okay. I'm really thinking of like really short-term or really short-hold electronic signs next to longer hold electronic signs and that being something of a fairness issue. Is there any?
I don't think that's going to come up. I think that they've studied through those type of possibilities and I don't think that situation presents itself currently.
Okay. And is the current rule the eight seconds everywhere? Is that what we've been dealing with?
The current, the high churn is eight seconds.
So everywhere that's turquoise on that map is currently eight seconds. And so some things are changing, we're scaling back the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
All right, I'll chip in one more thought. I think one of the things as a commission we should keep in mind is that the reason there's concern with signs is because they can be pretty blighting on the community. So as we noodle through this and the proposed regulations and any revisions that may come down the pike, I think we need to keep paramount in our minds how we want our community to look. Because these signs definitely have a visual impact. Just compare driving down State Street in Orem to driving down University Avenue in Provo. And, you know, it's strip mall city on State Street. And University Avenue was done quite a bit more tastefully. So I think, I think we're trying to keep that foremost in our minds as we, or we should. keep that foremost in our minds as we, or we should, as we go through this.
I think that was very well said. Have any other commissioners that want to comment on this or are we ready for any action? Commissioner Urquaga?
Okay, two things. Um, I am, I want to concur with Commissioner Henry's comment that, um, quick churn signs are actually, it is very frustrating to see something that looks interesting and then get close enough to read it and it's switched to something else. And that has happened, um, to me multiple times. The university, the Riverwoods Mall sign is one of those that I have a number of times thought, oh, well, that looked good, but what was it? Um, so I don't think that extending the churn time, the whole time is actually a detriment um, for people who are going by. Um, and especially if we're talking about four times a minute or every minute having something switch. I think that that is a frequency that does allow for, um, for people to actually get the content that is on the sign. Um, and I would like to let other commissioners comment on that. Um, but my inclination at this point would be to vote for the proposal with the caveat that, um, the city should be looking at turning off, um, signs, electric signs near residential areas um, during overnight hours.
You know, I really appreciate your comment and your observation and this is, this is maybe one, uh, perspective that I have relative to what you've noticed. I think I've noticed the same thing about, um, indeed signage of this type being particularly interesting, eye catching. It does captivate me as a driver. Um, so I certainly acknowledge the studies that have been provided that maybe refute the idea that there's actually a public safety component to this. Um, I'm not sure for me that that's ultimately my decision driver in terms of being concerned about more rapid churn rates. But, um, among a lot of other things that we have out in the landscape, these certainly in my view are a distraction. And when the copy's changing, I think it's a, a unique distraction even. So that's just my thought there. Commissioner Henry?
I guess I'm still kind of stuck on this one because as I said before, brightness is the biggest issue for me and this doesn't affect brightness and not knowing what, what's good brightness, what's bad brightness. I mean, short from going out at 4:30 AM and taking a look at some signs. I'm, I'm not sure I understand how to exactly move forward. Now, Development Service or Aaron, you guys mentioned that brightness will be addressed next? Is that understood?
Yeah, that's the next issue that the, this sign committee wants to tackle.
Okay. So this one then basically was churn time was kind of a, the big push for this, what we're discussing tonight.
Right.
Okay. Huh, well, I, I don't know. I guess I'm still a little stuck which way I would vote tonight. Uh, I mean, just thinking in front of my home, we have a, a street light that is very bright, but it never changes. And so we've just gotten used to it. I couldn't imagine if you could get used to a sign that's always changing and the brightness is always flashing and flickering. And I agree that I think near residential areas, especially North University Parkway, I, I see no reason to be advertising to truckers that are passing through when the stores are closed. Uh, it, it doesn't make any sense to me to, to allow that unless they were unbelievably dim signs that were just would not affect those around it. But if brightness is coming up in the next one, then maybe I just wait for that. So, okay. Sorry, thinking out loud. I'm done.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
That made me think about, um, how churn time is essentially giving you a different sign every time. So when these companies get their sign permit, um, do they have to tell you what's going to be on it? Because other sign permits are, they know what's going to be on the sign and what it's going to look like. But when you're able to turn frequently, and by frequently even 10 times a day is frequently because that's 10 different potential signs that could be cycling through. Do they have to clear their message with anyone? Or is that not something that a sign permit tries to regulate?
Yeah, we don't, we don't regulate message, uh, except on premise, off premise. Um, that's kind of a freedom of speech, uh, situation.
It just, it really, it opens up also, having the ability to change your sign frequently opens up cans of worms in many different areas. Um, the other question I had, or I guess it was just in support of the language in here, I agree. Animation is a really catchy advertising, um, capability, but those are the most distracting signs and um, a sign doesn't churn, but it's animated. That's equally distracting in my opinion. So that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Yeah, just to clarify for everyone, uh, on the staff report, it says a summary of key issues. Um, and it lists those. So what we're discussing tonight with this particular item is not all encompassing. In other words, we're only addressing one small portion of the regulations. And these, these issues of brightness, uh, for example, is going to be another, um, uh, revision to the sign code, correct?
Right. Yeah. So it, it took over a year to get these ones out of the sign committee. So they, they wanted to kind of take them a piece at a time.
Yeah, that makes sense. So we're only, in this item, we're only looking at updating, uh, the sign area size. The whole time or churn time, however you want to express that. Um, you're replacing the, the charts that you had in there for sizing with tables that are a little more succinct. Uh, and that's it for this particular revision, but there will be other revisions coming down the pike as this moves through committee and council and so forth.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just from a crystal ball perspective, uh, what might the timing be of, of round two of potential changes? Be staff throw out a guess even at that?
Well, all I can say is it took us a year to get these ones out.
Okay.
Or hopeful for sooner than a year.
I mean, it seems like probably the, the questions are more focused now maybe than they would have been at the onset a year ago.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Henry?
Okay. I apologize. I just thought of something else that, that hit me when I was reviewing this this week. And did staff consider, it comes up every time I, I work on a commercial building, signage and street trees. Uh, the, the heights of these signs being able to go under a tree or something, was that considered at all? Cause it seems like I fight with developers all the time about street trees and signage.
That, that really didn't come up in discussion. Uh, really, we're not changing any of the height regulations. We're just replacing those old graphics with tables that are more easy to read.
Okay. Okay. I guess that's something we can discuss another time, but that definitely, I know we're going to have one coming up that I'm working on here in a few weeks. But, uh, the owner wants to eliminate the street trees because it blocks the signs. And it, it's frustrating from a, a quality of life issue of what trees do for streets. And yet they do need to get their, their message across. So, uh, okay, that's all I have.
Again, thank you, Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I am willing to make a motion on item one uh, with the caveat that we're only addressing the issues that are itemized on the staff report and that there will be additional uh, discussion about things like brightness and whether these signs are permitted to be on all night if they're adjacent to a residential area and so on and so forth. Uh, as those, as those items come through council and the committee. So if everyone's ready or okay with that.
I believe we're ready for a motion if you would like to.
Okay.
Make one.
For item one, I make a motion that we recommend to municipal council approval. The Development Services Department on behalf of the sign committee requests an ordinance text amendment to chapter 6.06 and 14.38 of the Provo City Code to update use of electronic signs and standards for signs and outdoor advertising with citywide impact.
I am. Go ahead. I'm willing to second that. I would also like to, um, ask staff to make it clear to city council that, um, we would like to see the, at least the nighttime timing issue addressed as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'm happy to report that in the report of action.
So I am seconding the motion as stated and making a separate recommendation.
Okay. Well, we'll go with the motion as stated for now. And is there any discussion on the motion? I don't see any hands. So we will go ahead and, uh, just go down the roll. We'll start with Commissioner Phillips.
Aye on the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Urquaga?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson?
Aye.
Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
An aye vote aye as well. So the motion carries eight to zero. That motion is to recommend approval of item number one. Uh, commissioners, does anybody have any concerns with us? As Commissioner Urquaga suggested, asking staff and maybe the sign committee to move forward as quickly as possible with the, uh, as I understood it, it was basically at the light level issue and maybe the, the, the timing of having signs lit throughout the
Basically the overnight issue.
Okay.
Having those per either lowered significantly or turned off for a period of time and maybe both.
I don't see anybody ready to object to that at all, um, at least as a, as a topic of discussion and trying to get that back in front of us sooner than later. Um, and I realize this might be a little bit out of line, but and I'll tell you, I don't want to be the one, but things like a sign committee, i- is there a role for a commissioner perhaps to play? Would there be value in having a planning commissioner be a part of that discussion? Would staff be comfortable with that? Um, and would there be a commissioner that would want to do that if there was an opportunity to, to be engaged? I feel like that might make the kind of conversation we had tonight go a little bit easier if we had somebody that had participated. Any thoughts on that?
That thinks that would be helpful.
Is there anybody on the commission that would want to engage like that and be a part of that conversation? Which might make it really easy to. Well, maybe we can just leave that open ended. If anybody, uh, has a whim and they decide they want to, want to wade in, uh, I'd maybe suggest to just reach out to staff. Um, it doesn't look like we have any buddies that would want to fight over the opportunity. So, uh,
I would encourage, I, I, as the representative on T Mac for the transportation, I find those discussions enlightening. So I would not myself be in a position to do signage, but I would really encourage somebody else to take up that mantle.
Um, this is Daniel Gonzalez. I would, I would be up for some duty there.
I think that'd be wonderful if you'd be willing to do that. Or of course, since Commissioner Jones isn't here tonight, she could just end up with the assignment. But, um, it's probably more tasteful. Daniel, if you're up for it, uh, to fill that role, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I would think those
Sorry.
I would think those meetings are still being held over Zoom. So Mr. Gonzalez will get you the Zoom, uh, link so that you can attend those that way.
Thanks, Mr. Pepperoni.
Okay, great. Um, we will move on to item number two. Um, but again, I don't think I stated it clearly. Uh, maybe I did. Motion carried to recommend approval of item number one. Um, and item number two, Alan Polson requests project plan approval for renovation of the commercial building located at 655 east, 300 south in the general commercial zone. Mr. Wright?
I thank you. So this property that the applicant is requesting a project plan approval on is the, the former Alan's grocery store located here. They're not requesting, um, a change in the actual building. Uh, the, the building will pretty much stay, uh, as is, except for what they're planning to do is, is give the building a, an update, a facelift, if you will, to make that facade, uh, improve quite a bit as well as landscaping, adding landscaping up parking lot where there currently is. There is no landscaping there now. So that'll, that'll bring the, the property into compliance with the current code as part of this, uh, project plan approval. Uh, here's a, the zone that it's in. It's in the general commercial, the CG zone. And, uh, here's kind of a proposed plan that they're gonna, like I said, add that landscaping to the site and here's kind of current look is on the top and what they're proposing to do. So this project's been through design review committee. Uh, they, they, the, they worked for that on the facade. And typically this is one we would just take through the administrative hearing uh, process instead of bringing it to planning commission since it's already existing and everything like that. Uh, but they are requesting, um, so it's architectural woodwork business. And so they want to be able to place, uh, a dust collection system in the, in the back of the property outside. And so the code does have a provision where the planning commission can, uh, can approve something like that outside of the structure. So the applicant will have more information on that if you have specific questions related to that. But that's what they're uh, requesting is planning commission approval for locating that outside of the, the structure. Everything else will be located in the building. And like I said, the, the parking will, um, there's going to be some stalls that will be lost with, with adding the landscaping to it. Um, but with the use that they're proposing, the, the number of stalls that they'll have uh, will be a little bit over what the minimum required parking will be. So, so even with the reduction in parking, they'll still comply with, uh, parking requirements. So staff's recommendation would be for approval and, uh, approval of the, the location of the dust collection system in the back of the property there. There's any questions for me? I'd be happy to answer those or get specific questions for the applicant. I believe they're here as well.
You know, I think my questions, maybe a couple of them, just the, the, the zoning and the nature of the general commercial zone. Um, and maybe the nature of the use that we're talking about here. Does this, for example, have like a retail component and that type of a thing? Um, and I say that, uh, feeling like typically I would see this use maybe, um, maybe in a very different part of a community, a community that's maybe zoned industrial or something like that. But I say that not entirely understanding exactly what what's going to go on here.
Yeah, my understanding is they're relocating their headquarters here. So this is going to be their their office and their sales and then assembly of the products that they do. So.
Okay.
They'll have a an office and sales. Yeah, well, they'll be doing. Yeah, yeah. So they'll kind of have three components there, the sales, the office, and then the assembly manufacturing of the product they sell.
Are there any like nuances to the zone that would limit the amount of manufacturing that they could do here, you know, compared with other uses or that type of a thing? Is that like an ancillary part of the the operation or? Does that matter?
Yeah, I think it's kind of all covered in the the standard land use code for that. And so, yeah, there's not necessarily a a limit, but parking is is kind of broken up into the different types of square footages. So that's kind of where that.
So the CG zone allows manufacturing. That's maybe the easiest way to ask.
Yeah, I think there was in that SLU code 5700, there's furniture and and home related stuff, which is kind of what they're you know, they remodel kitchens and things like that and in homes and and things like that. And I think maybe the applicant could expand a little bit more on what exactly they're they're doing as far as the manufacturing is.
Not all dust collection systems in my experience are the same, but some are quite loud. And, you know, again, back to kind of the unique sighting of the facility, in my opinion, where we're right next to homes. What kind of consideration has been given to that?
Yeah, I think that was, you know, what was brought up and why we thought it would be good for the for the planning commission to come review this one and and kind of have the applicant explain a little bit more. He did show me a video of with the with the machine running. And it seemed fairly quiet for what you'd think, but I don't know if I would have them kind of expand a little bit more on that to answer.
Could he is he also going to talk to us about the efficiency of the collector? Because they seem over time to lose efficiency. Is it going to be covered? I mean, I guess these are questions for.
Yeah, for the.
Yeah, and I don't, Mr. Wright didn't really want to grill you or put you on the spot. But to get to this point, have has there been discussion about like anything that might help baffle or reduce noise levels or those types of things? Or is staff just comfortable with it, which I would understand if if that's the case?
Yeah, I believe they're looking to do. And I think they could talk to a little bit more. It sounded like they were willing to put in some landscaping if if needed back there to help damper some of of the noise. That, you know, like the planning commission could talk about some of those options and see what the applicant's willing to to do, whether there's some walls or things like that. I think what was explained to me was that putting it inside the building makes it so that there's an issue with, you know, using the air within the building and and the intake and all of that going back into the same system. But again, I'll I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about all of that.
So this is Scott Roberts. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, Scott, if you would maybe just give us another minute, but I do appreciate you being ready to jump in. Commissioner Urquaga, I missed your hand a moment ago. I think it was you.
Yeah, well, I think you may be talking about it. I got bumped off, and so I had to switch to my hotspot. And so you were talking about the impact of the dust collection system on the neighbors. And that was really what my question was about as well. Noise impact, air impact, smells or anything else that would be an issue. Curious as to what that would do. It looks like there are some residential homes really close to this development or this building.
Thank you. In in just a second, Commissioner Knutson, I'm going to ask you to maybe restate some things I heard you saying a moment ago, but just again to clarify for me. The planning commission's approval of the dust collection system. What's the purview that we have there? I mean, is that on the table and could be denied? Is it a matter of imposing conditions? I mean, this isn't this isn't a conditional use.
Yeah, so the code allows or the code says that all the uses should be contained within the structure except for those that the planning commission deems appropriate to.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Knutson, you had a couple of questions that I think I heard you mentioning. Do you mind restating those?
Maybe it'd just be better if we waited and heard what Scott Roberts has to say. And then if I have some other questions after he's completed, then I'll express them.
Commissioners, any any other questions before we turn the time over to the applicant? I don't see any hands. Mr. Roberts, I appreciate your patience. Do you mind just explaining whatever it is that you'd like to about the operation? And I mean, you've heard what we've we've brought up about the dust collection.
Yeah, no problem. So what what we're moving in there is an architectural woodworking business. And and like you said, we do have manufacturing, we have sales, we have engineers that work with us. And like I said, a sales floor upfront. Primarily, our work goes into homes, residential homes, usually high end. We build specialized furniture. We do a lot of stuff for like LDS temples. And in fact, we're doing all the woodwork in the in the BYU, the new BYU School of Music, just up the road from there. And the dust collection system is is quiet and we are we are actually implementing additional sound dampening features on on our style of dust collector that we're putting in here. This is a style of dust collector that they use in in most schools. And in fact, they just did a new one at Salt Lake Community College, which borders residential similar to this for this exact reason, to make it quiet and to make it more appropriate. Our hours, our our daytime hours. We're usually there, you know, seven in the morning till about five at night. And then very rarely are we there weekends, but Monday through Friday is our typical typical hours. We have had a neighborhood meeting on this where we had about 30 participants from the from the Mazur neighborhood that and about what we do and and the dust collection. Again, the dust collection does have a hum to it for sure. It's enclosed, so it doesn't blow stuff all over. All dust collection systems lose efficiency as their filters get clogged. I know that was a question earlier, but as you keep your filters clean, which is advantageous for us to keep the sawdust moving, then their their efficiency should be maintained through, again, just like a furnace or anything else, as your filter gets clogged, it loses efficiency. But as you install new filters or clean your filter, you're back to normal operating efficiencies.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the applicant? We'll start with Commissioner Henry.
Yes, thank you. So I actually owned a cabinet shop about three for about three years in my younger days. And the dust collector was loud. And that was my first question on this, seeing it at the back of the building near those homes. And my other fear was reading stories about the quick quack car wash that went on on Center Street in Orem. The fight that went on and the newspaper articles that were written about the fight between the neighbors and the car wash because of the noise. This really threw a red flag for me. Did some internet searches and all I found was how do I quiet my dust collector? How do I quiet my dust collector? Neighbor's dust collector is really loud. How do I get him to stop? And so I this makes me really nervous because I don't want to be the provost version of that quick quack car wash with the neighbors screaming about the noise coming from the dust collector. Do you have, Mr. Roberts, you happen to have like a decibel level of what that dust collector runs at, like a manufacturer spec?
Let me see if I can pull it up here. I have a video I can play for you on my phone, but it's going to be sound from phone to your sound. And I don't know that that's, you know.
Could you share that with staff perhaps so that they could present it? That might make it a little bit more might make the quality a little bit more impactful. And maybe to follow up on the questions that Commissioner Henry just asked about like decibels. What are the thresholds that would come into play from a code enforcement perspective? So that'd be for staff. What's what's the maximum? And is there like a maximum duration that you could maintain a certain sound level and those types of things?
Yeah, the city does have a noise ordinance that has those decibels and those hours of operation, things like that. Off the top of my head, I can't tell you what those specific numbers are, but yeah, there is a noise ordinance that the city has in the code.
I know just in in my reading studying up on this, there was a conversation about a school where they tested it. It was 96 decibels, which is the same as a lawnmower from five feet away. And they did some things to get it down. They were able to get it down to 60, which may be acceptable, but and and it can get down. I guess my question is not knowing how the applicant is going to get that down and what measures are going to take place, some more plans showing, you know, what types of foams or something that'll be in in that enclosure. They make me really nervous because I I don't want to create something for these neighbors that is going to be a constant drone for them. I know with my dust collector, my guys had to have hearing protection on when it was running. So it they they can be so loud. And that that's my biggest concern with this.
Right now, our table saws are louder than our dust collector on the system we have. But this is a large commercial dust collection. And our portable dust collectors that we have or other areas are much louder than our our large one. But I'm looking through the the specs right now, but I do not see a decibel rating in this. I know it meets noise ordinances for you know, most most applications because these are very common in, like I said, schools that that go in residential areas and and then they have some additional dampening in the ductwork and some other things. And of course, in the enclosure itself to add foam to the doors and things like that. And we were planning on doing the, you know, the best that they have available. But again, I do not see a decibel rating right off the top of my head. But it's a Bell Fab dust collection system that would be going in.
Why exterior? It seems inherent to me that that is going to allow for you know, just simply a louder decibel reading at a property line and that type of a thing than a a unit that would be internal to the building. And I assume it's makes serve its purpose better operationally. But any thoughts about changing the approach in terms of of the kind of device that's used and where it can be placed and and I say that just from the perspective of, again, trying to be very sensitive to to the noise that spills out into the neighborhood?
No, correct. I I think as far as as far as operating inside, it would it needs fresh air to operate, just like large air conditioning systems and commercials where they usually sit on the roof or something else like that. You would need you'd need fresh air. You couldn't you'd suck all the fresh air out of a building. In that sense, if it was operating inside on this. So it uses fresh air to circulate and and create suction that way. And so, again, we were anticipating doing screen wall in front of it to help with with sound as well as plant some trees in the back to help to help buffer those sounds. But if you pull up to the if you pull up to my building in Lehigh right now, you won't even hear the dust collection from the front of the building. You can't even hear it. You'll hear the freeway. I'm I'm on State Street in Lehigh, and the freeway is way more overpowering than than our dust collection, which is louder and older than this one.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I just want to clarify exactly, since there's not a building plan that goes with this, was there a building plan? Architectural plan? I saw the elevations and the parking lot layout.
Yeah, after they get project plan approval, they'd submit a building permit application.
Okay. Well, my question concerns the use of the building. So my understanding is you're producing architectural millwork. Is that correct?
Correct.
Cabinetry, paneling, moldings.
Correct.
All of those things. Okay. So what portion of this building will be dedicated to production and storage of materials? And what portion of the building will be dedicated to things like office and showroom?
About two thirds production and storage of materials and one third office and showroom.
Okay. And you you talked a bit about the ventilation requirements of the equipment for the dust collection. And I've also been I haven't worked in a cabinet shop, but I've been involved in buildings that had very large manufacturing facilities such as that with dust collection systems. And I'm just curious, is it a cost prohibitive to try and contain the dust collection system within the building footprint and bring in fresh air through a separate ventilation system through the roof? What's the thinking on why you want to put it externally to the footprint?
So again, I have not been in any production facility or wood shop that of a dust collection this size that is interior. So I haven't seen one, number one. Number two, it's a fire hazard to have it inside the building versus having it outside the building with more air around it. So again, and then the dust does have to exit to a dumpster, which a which is enclosed, again, that a that a large, you know, dumpster truck has to pick up and haul off. So.
So where exactly on the back of this property would the dust collection machine and the dumpster be located?
You can see his mouse kind of pointing there on the back. He's kind of circling. That's where it would be. Adjacent to the loading docks.
So is that going to be open to the weather, the dust collection system?
Yes.
So there'll be screen walls around it on what, two sides?
So the building will act as a screen wall on the back side. And there's already a screen wall on the east, and then we would add a new screen wall right there on the north.
To the north. Okay. So are there a lot of deliveries and pickups happening at this rear loading dock?
So the the deliveries going out happen from the rear loading dock right now. And you'll have about a semi a week out of there. The deliveries coming in are on the front of the building. But but far less than a grocery store that would be receiving and product daily. We would get more product through the front, but our but our output right now is currently about oh, probably a less than semi a week.
I think that answers my questions about the use of the building. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Lisa Jensen?
Yeah. Some of my questions have been answered. I'm mostly concerned. I know that you said 30 people, Mr. Roberts, came to the neighborhood meeting. Do you know where in relation to Do you know where in relation to the property those, um, attendees came from? I just know there's, there's families that live in those homes and they've lived there for a long time and they care about the community. And so I'm wondering if you've actually talked to the owners or occupants of the houses that are adjacent to the problem at hand? Any feedback from them?
So yes, actually the, there's about five houses directly surrounding it right there and all five of those were in attendance and we, we hand delivered flyers to all those houses, um, right there and they attended and the meeting. Um, and then we hand delivered within, I think it was a thousand foot circle. We, we delivered flyers to everyone within a thousand feet of the building, which went about, you know, two and a half or three blocks. I can't remember when I did the circle. Um, on all sides of it and south of State Street and Ward Center Street there, so.
Did they have any concerns coming, you know, at the beginning that you were able to, to comfort them over or were they on board from the very beginning? What was their general sentiment?
Again, the general sentiment was very positive. The dust collection was brought up and we discussed noise, um, at that time and I played a video for them the same, um, on my phone. And again, like Brian stated earlier, the sound of a lawnmower, it was probably just a little bit, it's quieter than a lawnmower, but it's about, you know, it's hum like that is, I thought that was a good description of, that everyone could understand. Um, but the general sentiment that, that it would be less problematic than, they, they all would like a grocery store to go back in because that's what they would like, but they, they all felt it would be less traffic and impact on their neighborhood than the grocery store.
Right, and I don't know if anyone on the commission has been past there in the last few months, but that loading ramp area behind, last time I saw it was, was not the type of thing you'd like to have in your neighborhood. It was full of damaged carts and pallets and graffiti and garbage and, um, you're talking about less deliveries and less traffic, but maintaining a nicer property. So I would hope that that would be a, a bonus for the neighborhood. What about the daycare facility on the northeast corner? Did they attend or have you heard from them at all?
I have not heard anything from them. We delivered a flyer, but, um, heard no, no response from, from the daycare that's, that's there in the corner.
Then one last, um, actually two last questions. Um, we've talked about housing it within the footprint and you mentioned why that wasn't a good idea. And I'm just wondering if you've considered housing it on the southeast corner where you're surrounded by commercial use instead of closer to the residence? If you're able to screen it on three sides on the back, is the reason you can't do it on the front because of the delivery, the disposal pickup?
Partially because of the disposal pickup. If you look at the new landscape plan, there's multiple islands and it kind of ruins our pathways for getting in trucks to, to certain areas. So if you kind of see, uh, we agree with the landscape and we like it and we had considered putting it on the front of the building at one time, but when we got the new parking requirements and trying to fit a dust collector where a, where a semi could come pick up a, a bin, it seemed very problematic.
What about the, um, that little open driveway space on the northwest corner of the building?
So we, that would be our ideal spot to put it, but we figured that was just too close to the, to the house.
House to the north that backs right onto it?
Right. That, I mean, honestly, that's the ideal spot for us to put that. Um, but I figured we didn't have any buffer zone there.
Okay. Um, the other question I had was just about access off of Third South. Now that they've got that, um, median all the way down, it makes access to the property tricky. Are we going to be seeing people making U-turns on 700 East in order to get into your frontage if they're coming from the west or have you thought about that at all or have any plans for that?
Um, we, I mean, we do get visitors and we do get, we do get traffic, but we're not like a mall or an auto parts store or anything like that where we have frequent, you know, just hour upon hour. Um, the U dot median has been a discussion. In fact, one of the reasons why the grocery store is probably not viable there is because of that turning into it and why our use may feel a little better because, um, our employees will be, will be turning in there and, and like I said, you know, like you can turn in to, I think it's legal to turn in if you see that, that little turn in right there on the southeast corner, there is a drive approach. The median is, ends, you know, west of...
Oh, okay. Or it gets to the light, the curb, the median.
But you cannot turn in the big, the bigger approach. You cannot turn, you cannot make a left turn, turn into that.
And most of the parking is for your employees, not for your customers, so there's not going to be that much in and out all day?
Correct.
Okay. I think that takes care of all my questions. Thank you.
Well, I want to go back, um, Mr. Wright, I am really going to need some help with the SLU code and how the manufacturing side of this that we're talking about fits in with the 5700. And clearly there are different ways to interpret different things, but I at face value would read that to talk about sales of different products. But I'm not seeing, for example, you know, the word manufacturing anywhere listed in 5700. Um, so particularly understanding that the majority of the, the footprint is going to be dedicated to that use. Uh, please help bring me along on that. I'm, I'm struggling there.
Um, yeah, I think, uh, you know, some of the, in 5700, there's quite a bit of, uh, uses in that, um, from what I recall, there were, you know, furniture and, and, uh, things like that were part of that one.
Clearly it's, it's, for example, furniture, home furnishings and equipment, but nowhere is there, I mean, uh, and it's under the, the broader category of... I'm just scrolling back up to it. Um, no, that's not right. It's not under general merchandise, but, um, it's akin to that, you know, just given where it fits in with the other, uh, land uses. Um, you know, I would, I would absolutely read this at face value as pertaining to the sale of furniture, the sale of floor coverings, the sale of draperies curtains, china, window screens, window shades, awnings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But, um, in my mind, that's a really distinct use from something that I'm not used to seeing next to a residential neighborhood or to go where a commer, where a grocery store could go.
Yeah, so it has, uh, 5711 would be part of that cabinet work on a custom basis to individual order.
Am I, maybe I'm not reading the right thing. 5711 and what I'm reading is just furniture.
Yes, so in our land use, uh, in our zoning ordinance, um, very frequently we list just one number like 5700 and that means it includes everything in the 5700, uh, category, which goes all the way to 57...
Forty-nine?
Fifty-seven, yeah. So 5711 is the one that Mr. Wright was just reading. It would cover all those things. So 5711 would be permitted, which is cabinet work on a custom basis to individual order and slash retail. Which is what we thought this was, which is why we processed it this way.
That's the verbiage. It says cabinet work.
Read it.
Yeah. I'm, I'm absolutely looking at the wrong document. I just followed, uh, from the standard land use code page. Um, and it's just not that explicit, so can you read that though again?
Cabinet work on a custom basis to individual order and retail.
Yeah, okay. That, um, I think that covers it. Uh, thank you, I appreciate that. And, uh, boy, I think Commissioner Urquiaaga was next.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm imagining this because I've never done carpentry work, but the, the dust collector goes on and off as milling is done, so it's not a continuous hum, but it's kind of started up, do your saw, whatever work you're doing with the milling or sawing, and then it turns off and you do other things and then the next time you need to saw, you turn it back on. Is that the way it works?
In, in, in this case, it would run more continuously from, from like seven, I mean, our, our hours would be about seven to four, um, when we work overtime would be seven to five. So it's more...
Okay.
Run in this scenario.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Commissioner Henry?
Uh, again, back to the noise, the landscape portion, uh, as a sound deadening device doesn't work, especially in small split spaces. Uh, according to the University of Tennessee, a row of two to three densely planted shrubs will only lower sounds by seven decibels. Uh, and another website that is from an extension of a university, uh, they cite that using plants alone is the least effective method for noise reduction in places with limited space. So again, I'm just, I'm, I'm so concerned about the sound. Uh, and I, I did find, I looked on Belfab's website, I don't know which particular unit you're using, but I did find one that had a decibel rating and it was 84 to 92 decibels. Uh, out of that particular machine, which is an exterior modular dust collection system. So, uh, I'm just, I, I'm really concerned and I, I'd prefer to see plans and, and things that show how you're going to dampen that sound because they are loud and they are constant. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the, the land use code and, um, for, for Provo City, um, and they have a sheet that says retail trade 5200 to 5900 discussing retail use. And, and one of the phrases that I'm getting hung up on is that, um, the establishment may process its products such as, but such processing is incidental or subordinate to selling. And so in, in light of, um, I think it was mentioned earlier, two thirds of the, the facility being devoted to production, um, this, to me, this seems more like a, uh, well, primarily a, a production facility. Um, although there's clearly, you know, he's, or the applicant has expressed a office and retail component and a showroom. It, it feels more like a, a production facility. And that, that concerns me for, uh, when, when you look at similar commercial uses in the, in the neighborhood, um, pr- production, we, we don't really find production or processing primary uses.
Mr. Gonzalez, what code, what, uh, provision are you reading from, please?
Um, I wish there was a page number on this, but it's, it's Provo City land use code. Um, it gives descriptions on, on breakdowns of, by the number, but on, on the one that says, if you want to, it pulls up retail trade, semicolon, 5200 to 5900.
So what we would go by is we would go by the zoning ordinance, uh, so that's chapter 1422, which is the general commercial zone. Then under the permitted uses, it lists that standard land use, uh, 5700 that Mr. Anderson and I were just discussing. And so under that, there isn't a limitation, there is no limitation as to what's ancillary to what. As long as it meets that 5711 that we read, we feel like we would have to permit it. I don't think that provision, that restriction you're referring to applies in this situation.
Yeah, and, and when I, but when I read even the, the zoning ordinance, the 142210, it, it seems to describe a primarily as a retail, the commercial general being a, a retail thing. Um, the uses of the characteristics of this zone will be a wide range of retail stores, shops, services and offices. And, and this, this, I, I know there isn't a, a specification for, for allocation of, of square footage, but it, it, it doesn't seem to be in harmony with that.
Yes, I think that's a valid point, that the general purpose and objective, what you're reading from is the purpose and objective of the zone. Yes, I think that's valid.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Urquiaaga?
Commissioner Jensen was ahead of me.
Okay, well, thank you for helping keep me straight. Um, Commissioner Jensen?
You're too kind, Mr. Jensen. I just had one question for the applicant. Is the dust removal system powered by an electric motor or some other means?
It's an electric motor.
Okay, thank you. And one question for staff, I seem to recall a year or two ago, there was a, uh, land use and neighborhood plan done for this neighborhood. And at that time, I believe that with all the improvements that were made on 300, uh, it was envisioned that this would become kind of a neighborhood, uh, mixed use center with perhaps some higher density housing and retail. Is, is that recollection correct?
Yeah, um, so I think the goal in that area was, you know, they wanted to keep the grocery store. That was kind of the, the predominant thing. Um, but also, yeah, allow for, and I think more of, of that was across the street from the grocery store was the mixed use, uh, component. Um, but, but I think as, as well on this site too, and that's something I kind of talked to the applicant about in the future, if, if they weren't needing the, the parking lot as much, if, you know, some smaller pad sites could get built out to the street or something to help improve the, you know, the, the street, uh, face there instead of just having the parking lot back and...
It's pretty small for a spin site though. Um, I get, I, I don't think anybody has heartburn, I, I, I'm going to speak for myself. I don't have heartburn over the use of the building. My heartburn is putting something that is potentially both a sound and an air pollution, uh, nuisance in the middle of a residential neighborhood on the backside of that building. Um, and I'm not convinced yet that that's not going to happen. The only reason we're reviewing this is because they need to put that dust collection system to the exterior of the building. Is that right?
Yeah, to get planning commission approval for that.
Yeah. I understand it's a commercial site that's been vacant for what, two years now maybe? Quite a long time. Uh, and it's, you know, eventually going to deteriorate to a point where it doesn't have much value for reuse without considerable investment. So, you know, there's two sides to the coin. I'm, I'm just not convinced that this will not present a problem, uh, for the residential areas that surround. Those are my thoughts.
From my perspective, certainly there are a lot of good things that would come with this. Um, and I regret that as I go through everything that I've been able to rifle through on the city's website, I can't find the language that, um, Mr. Pepperoni, Mr. Wright referenced earlier, but boy, just, um, every experience that I've ever had with a general commercial type of a zoning district is, it is, it's all about professional services and retail and that type of commerce and not a production facility of some type, so, um, if in my view, the commission feels like the use is appropriate for the site, I think we need to maybe do some retooling of some zoning language to accommodate it, but, uh, given what I'm seeing, I don't think that the use itself is an allowed use in the zone. Um, I also think that there needs to be a very, very well conceived mitigation plan for the dust collection system, um, that goes beyond... for the dust collection system that goes beyond, you know, providing information that we have available tonight. We still have ways to go tonight relative to public comment and that type of a thing, but I certainly am gravitating towards supporting a recommendation to continue this or a motion to continue it. Commissioner Urquiaaga.
Yes, thank you. I guess this sort of dovetails with that. My question for Mr. Pepperoni was, if this is a permitted use, what is the purview of the planning commission in making this decision? And I do think this building is, has become an eyesore. It's an unused deserted parking lot and it's really ugly. And I would love to see something else come in there. And as far as a commercial manufacturing type of thing, it seems to me like this is about as good as it gets. But then I do, the zoning and the use question, I think, needs to be answered. But if the zoning does permit this use, then what is, what are our options? And what is our role?
Yeah, so the, the code talks about, you know, everything should be contained within the building for the use. But like I said, it does have that provision that allows the planning commission to approve something, you know, located outside. So an example would be like at a gas station or something, you know, not everything's going to be within the convenience store. There's going to be the pumps and the air compressors and, you know, different things outside of the facility. And so that's kind of why there's provision there so that planning commission can take a look at that and see if it's appropriate to approve it outside of the structure.
Okay, does, Mr. Roberts, with that video that you've got, is it something that's available on the internet that you could send a link to this city that they could play it for us?
It's something that I just took of one existing, but I could probably round some up or I could, I could email that video to, to, oh, what's her name? Sorry. NGA is what it came across on my email as, I don't know. But I could email that video. I do know from our neighborhood meeting, the neighborhood was generally excited that it wasn't going to be apartment buildings. But that's, I mean, that's the only information I could pass you on.
This is not, yeah. I do not see this as a, as a negative use for this property. I, I have some concerns about the noise and I would like to know a little bit more about that. But if the noise and the impact on the neighborhood is minimal, then I'm not opposed.
Mr. Roberts, if you want to email that to Na, I think Na will be able to play it.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm trying to pull it up right now and email it to her.
Well, Scott, I'm Tyler Roberts, Scott's brother. While he's getting that email put together to send over to you guys, one of the things that we can do is we can gather some more information, including decibel ratings on the particular make and model that we're doing. We could also do an elevation of the screen wall included with the landscaping that we proposed to put around the dust collection system. Because our thought process was that this was going to be a masonry or concrete board form type screen wall that was attractive with green, green space landscaping in front of it. So we're not using the shrubs, so to speak, to deaden noise. It would be a firm concrete structure or masonry type wall that would be attractive and, and then landscape in front of it to make it even more so attractive. We do know that this is a challenge and we don't want to be a burden to the citizens or the community around it. We want to, we want to be a benefit to the community. We both grew up here in Provo. We've lived here pretty much our whole lives. We already have a construction business here in, in the East Bay area and this is bringing the shop and mill from Lehigh to, to the Provo. We hope to be a great asset to the community in the process. So if the, if the recommendation is that we need to gather some more information so we can be a little better prepared to give you guys an informed decision, I think we'd be happy to do so. And then hopefully Scott's able to send this video over to you. He just sent it. So hopefully we can take just a minute and you guys can get a real live version of, you know, this is probably from thirty or forty feet away from it, that he took a video of a similar mill down in St. George.
Okay, just very quickly, how tall would you expect that wall to be? Are you talking six feet, eight feet? Less?
It'd be like six to eight feet, but probably eight foot wall to try to contain it.
Our original thought was eight feet, but, you know, that would be open to discussion and we'd be willing to look at that. But we had wanted to be an attractive amenity to the, to the community, to the homes around it. We don't want it to be overpowering like a twenty-foot wall. But at the same sense, if it needs to be even ten or twelve feet, we wouldn't oppose to that. I think what we need to do is pull the exact make and model and have Alan Paulson from WPA give us a conceptual view of that.
I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Some of the, in fact, I think most of the dust collection systems that I've seen in the past aren't typically located at ground level. Would it be in this case, would it be on, would it be at ground level?
Yes, this one's at ground level. I don't know if I can do or not yet. You can kind of see. I do have a plan. I don't know if I can share my.
Well, I think maybe just to kind of keep things moving tonight, we'll go to Commissioner Henry. Do you have, it looks like you have.
Yeah, one quick question. Is, is there a, a similar unit somewhere here in town or nearby that we can go here? I'm just concerned a video isn't going to give the real effect of, of the, the power because these, these dust collectors, they run at a kind of a low decibel. It kind of punches through. So is, is there, are you aware of a system kind of around town we can go listen to during working hours?
In Provo, I'm not. I know they just put the same exact system in Salt Lake Community College in their new wood shop. Just installed right now at Slick. And then the video I sent is of Riverwoods Mill in St. George. And, and from my understanding, they did not do the decimal, decibel deadening. At this one, the one in Salt Lake Community College does have the decibel deadening optional. So the video I sent is without, this is without any sound deadening, the one I sent. But I don't know if you'll be able to play that or not.
As a follow-up to Commissioner Henry's question, I, and I really appreciate the idea of us maybe being able to use something that's in operation as an example to the extent that having staff get some decibel readings, you know, the same distance, you know, of the homes that'll be surrounding this here. For me, that becomes pretty important before this moves forward.
I've got that here now if you want me to go over those in the noise ordinance.
Well, and I'm, I'm thinking more just in terms of what should be anticipated from the equipment that they're talking about. So there's additional research on that. Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
Just to interrupt, this is Na. I'm ready to share the video if, whenever you're ready.
We'll see if Lisa has anything she wants to ask first.
You're muted, Lisa.
I actually forgot what I was going to say because I was watching for Na to be ready. So I can wait for her.
Okay. Let's go with the video. Or maybe we revisit that at a later date. Commissioner Henry, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
I guess just as, as one last thing, I've worked with, with the Roberts group before. I, pardon me, I, I trust that they're going to do what is right. I just want to be sure. As a planning commission, just to have the data to make the right decision so it doesn't turn into a problem down the road. I don't mean to be harsh or anything. My experience with the Roberts group is they are going to do what's best and what's right. I just want to be sure for the neighbors. So that's all I've got.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, I'll be real honest and direct. The look and feel of that piece of equipment located across the street from single-family homes is not making me feel more comfortable with the idea that this is an allowed use in a general commercial zone. But that might just be my thought. Before we open the public hearing, any other questions or comments for staff or the applicant?
I think the only comment I have is that, you know, these are common in school locations which are surrounded by residential neighborhoods. That would be my only comment. But again, we live and work here in Provo. So, you know, we care about Provo and we, we want to see it be successful and, and be a, be a good neighbor to all.
Thank you. Can we have staff help us open the public hearing?
There are no public comments at this time. Thirty seconds. No public comments.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing then. Like I mentioned earlier, I really believe that this needs some more work before we should act on it. That's my opinion. But I appreciate the dialogue. I think we've, we've put a lot of issues out there for staff and the applicant to work on perhaps before this comes back to the commission. I say that and invite any additional dialogue. Commissioner Jensen.
So I too am so torn about this because I think it would be an amazing asset to this otherwise vacant, lighted spot. I just, I think this is more of a manufacturing use than a retail use. And I don't, I don't want to allow something in there that, that the neighbors might think is a great idea now, but they're going to regret it later. I, I don't mind the sound of alarm more in the background, but all day long it drives me crazy. And the closer it gets, the more annoying it is. And I just think they may be excited to have a responsible tenant that these, these people seem like they are. But that doesn't necessarily mean it will be fun to listen to it. So I'm just really, I would feel more comfortable if the noise and dust containment was on the south end of the property. But I still feel like the, the land use code doesn't match up with what we're seeing here.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that this is relevant, but I mean, I'm, I'm imagining what the conversation would be like if we were talking about maybe another neighborhood with this use being talked about in this particular zone. And I really feel like there's a need to be very careful. And frankly, if the zoning allows it and that's clear, then, then that is what it is. I have the questions that I've already raised about that. But to add something to a part of the community that is already stressed in different ways, I think would be a, certainly a shame. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yeah, I didn't, I did want to say I do, I love the design. Like I, I think, I, I'm very familiar with that property. It feels like it's been vacant for more than two years. It feels like three or four. And there, there are improvements, there are landscape. It would be a huge upgrade. It would, it would really enhance that block and that intersection. So I wanted to compliment the applicant on that. That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or anything? If not, we'll certainly entertain a motion.
Hey, I have a comment.
Is that Commissioner Phillips?
Yeah, for some, for some reason I don't have a little hint, so.
Okay, gotcha.
You know, it's easy for us, for them to give us the specifications of their equipment and, and it would be able to tell us decibels that it's going to run at. And we can compare that to our city ordinances on noise. That would be, that would be very easy to, to look at. And, and we could see if it's compatible with what we already have. Then I wondered, I was going to ask Mr. Roberts, what, what percentage of your, of your manufacturing operation is going to be done in this facility?
Sorry. We would, we do all of it in, in our facility currently and anticipate doing all of our manufacturing there in this facility.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
I saw that David Day was made a co-host and I'm just curious as to whether he had something to present. Otherwise, I think I'm ready to make a motion.
No, I think that's just a, what do you call that? A compliment or something? It was their way of saying, hey, we see you're there. Here you go, co-host.
Okay, okay. As I'm listening to everyone, it sounds like we're not ready to move forward. So I would like to move that we continue item number two. Alan Paulson requests project plan approval for a renovation of the commercial building located at six fifty-five east, three hundred south in the central commercial CG zone for the Mazer neighborhood until they have an opportunity to develop some more specific plans and provide us with more detailed information about noise and other nuisances that might be an issue and how those would be abated.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Is that Lisa Jensen?
Um, maybe I need to wait till there's a second and a vote, but my question about Ms. Urquiaaga's motion is, do we as a planning commission or as the planning staff need to determine if this is actually allowable use before we continue something? I would hate to waste more of their time if it does not in fact fit in with what's allowed in the zone.
I think that's a great point. Do we have a second on the motion just by way of buttoning that up? If nobody else will, I will second the motion. If nobody else will, I will second the motion. I'm not sure if that's in accordance with our procedures, but uh, that being done, the motion to continue the item to give staff and the applicant to review the items that Commissioner Urquiaaga uh described, um, that's on the floor. So by way of discussion on the motion, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Jensen that that's worth uh, maybe some additional analysis on the part of staff. Uh, and I guess I would just simply make that as a request that staff review that. Maybe do a little bit deeper dive and I'd be very comfortable if, if correspondence came to the commission in the interim before this came back before us. Um, and you know, otherwise that just gets put into play with the applicant however is most appropriate. Again, in the interim, that's my thought. But um, any other discussion on the motion? I thought for sure there'd be more, but um, seeing none, and there we go. Commissioner Henry?
I guess I'm, I'm thinking back to a kind of a training we had where uh, Mr. Pepperoni asked us to deny more things so that those things can come through. And I say that just I guess as a question for the council. I, I'm heartened by the idea that these guys want to move their, their production to Provo. And so that part of me makes me want to be sure that we do everything we can to help these guys out where we can. Uh, I love the idea of businesses coming to Provo and, and setting up shop and especially founder places. But given the, the questions about the code itself, I just want to put out there, would it be better to deny with the intent that it comes back refreshed and better? Does staff have any, any recommendation on that?
Yeah, so our suggestion was uh, in cases where the item is going to be moving on to city council, that um, sometimes the denial is preferable to a continuance and let the city council go ahead and make their determination. In this case, this is your decision. This is a planning commission function decision. And I think the questions that the planning commission have asked are very relevant and need to be answered. So I think in this case, uh, a continuance is very appropriate. I think you've been clear on what it is you're looking for. Mr. Roberts, do you have a good understanding of what the planning commission wants you to come back with?
Yes, and I think largely depends on, you know, discussion between us and, and staff to determine, I mean, this is why we started this process back in December is to get to this point. Can we move here? Um, again, I see in the code that, you know, a lumberyard is allowed in a CG zone. And I, and I see the chat comments and I am, I am, you know, I am grateful for those chat comments because we would love nothing more than to be in East Bay right next door to our facility right now, but um, availability of land is very scarce in that area and, and the industrial space in Provo in general is, is very hard to find. There's not a lot of it. And where we're in indoor use, we thought maybe perhaps this, this could function. But again, we, we live and work here and want it to be successful for all the neighbors, not just, not just for us. And we understand, um, we understand what is being discussed. And I think really that's our biggest unknown right now. Where do we go? How do we go there? You know, is this an option? And that's what we're seeking. And depending on how your code is.
The planning commission made it clear that you have a question on land use and the staff will address that with the attorney's office and be able to report to you back on that. So staff will address that. Mr. Roberts will address the issues of uh, the exact noise level and buffering and, and those types of things. We'll bring those ideas back to you in two weeks.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Pepperoni.
Yeah, and I'll just add um, my two cents worth for Mr. Roberts. I really truly appreciate your attitude and um, the approach that you're taking here and the effort that you've put into getting this question before us. Thank you for that. And uh, like, as was mentioned earlier, and I'll tell you for a lot of reasons, there are a few things that I'd love more than to see a business leave Lehigh and land in Provo. So that, that absolutely is an exciting part of what you're proposing. And I, then I believe absolutely the enhancements that you'd make to the property uh, would be um, looked upon very favorably uh, by the neighborhood, but um, nonetheless I have the concerns that I've already mentioned. So, uh, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I don't see any. So once again, we'll, we'll take it from the top here. Commissioner Lisa Jensen? On the motion to continue.
I think I will vote aye.
Okay, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Urquiaaga?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson?
Aye.
Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
An aye vote aye as well. So the motion to continue item two carries eight to zero. Is there any other business that we need to discuss tonight? And with that, would someone care to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
That was Commissioner Lisa Jensen. Any objections to, to adjourning with Commissioner Henry's second? Going once, twice. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.